Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 24 Dudley Planning Board Meeting. We have present tonight myself Chairman Daniel Edmiston, Richard Clark, Guy Horn, Steve Wetroba. Our Town Planner Bill Scanlon is with us and Michelle as always. Good evening, everyone.
Dan.
I have to read our Governor Baker's order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting of the Dudley Planning Board will be conducted in total or in part via remote participation. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at DudleyMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Via Facebook Live and/or posted link at DudleyMA.gov following the meeting. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meetings, but the proceedings are real time via technological means. So it is 7:02. I'm going to call the meeting to order. As usual, we'll get ready to the approval of the minutes of our last meeting. If anybody had a chance to read those?
Yes.
What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which would have been the meeting of March 10, 2021 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the meeting from March 10, 2021. We will do a wonderful roll call vote for the last time, hopefully. Guy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself unanimous. We have an A and R plan. Land located off Dresser Hill Road and Coker Road, Karen Faraday and Marlene. When it pronounces wrong, sorry. Keeler assesses map 208 lot 28.1. You do a screen sharing or can you show us? Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Bill. Those calling up on the screen for us. Can you walk us through what they're trying to do? So they're splitting it in three different parcels, right?
Yes, is there someone here from from the owner's side who wants to speak to this or do you want me to just go through it again?
Nope, we're getting someone in attendance. Let him speak, yep.
I know there were one or two folks who wanted to come to the meeting, but I guess they're not here yet, so. So I can go through the plan if you like.
Sounds fair.
Actually, I see John Kroto, who was the submitter of the plan, so he's joining us now. So as you can see, this is a fairly large parcel. The intent of the plan is to carve off two non-buildable parcels. There's a parcel in the lower southeast corner called Parcel B, which is about 15.9 acres. And there's another parcel A in the northeast corner, which is about seven and a half acres. And the intent, I think, is to establish these as separate parcels so they can be transferred to the abiding owner who is the Kepke family. There's another parcel here, which is already in existence owned by Miss Anne French. So I think that in terms of an A and R endorsement, there's a note on the plan saying that they are not intended to be buildable lots. So therefore, there's really no concern of the planning board in terms of area or furniture requirements, since there will be most likely joined to the adjacent property. John, do you have anything you want to add about that?
Nope, you pretty much nailed it exactly what's going on. They're just looking to increase the amount of bufferage, if you will, between the two properties.
Okay.
Any waivers that we need for this, Bill?
Yes, they're asking for a waiver of topography. There were well shown on the site, but there's no topography. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, that's correct.
Fees have been collected and all that kind of good stuff?
Excuse me?
Fees have been collected, all that kind of good stuff?
John, you were going to drop off a check for this. Have you done that?
Correct.
Okay. Then, yes, we're all set then, Dan.
All right. Does the board have any questions?
I'm looking at I'm looking at the plan right now and did you say three lots? I see the lot with the house, Lot 1.
Right.
And then you get the remaining 58.7 acres?
Correct.
That would be Lot 2?
Yes, that's the part of the existing property.
Right, those those two pieces would stay with the Pelear's with Marlene. The other two, the one at the bottom and the triangle at the top, that would go to the Kepkies. It'd be absorbed by their property.
Okay, so.
They're just moving the property line from where it was existing to that, you know, shifting it so that way the Kepkies have a bigger piece of things.
All right.
So Steve, the way I'm seeing that, Steve, is the remaining land of 58.7 acres in Lot 1, it's all the same thing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all the same plot or property?
Correct. Then you have the triangle at the top is part is two and then the, you know, rectangle, if you will, at the bottom, that's number three.
Okay, all right, so.
The Kepki one in the middle between the triangle and the square at the bottom, that one's pre-existing. And then the one, you know, that's below the big piece of the 58 acres, that's staying the same as well.
Okay.
So the new property line would follow this line up here.
Correct.
Follow up. This would be a new property line.
That's correct.
Come over this way and down that way.
Okay, so so Lot 1 with the house actually already exists. I think that's where I was.
Yes.
Okay, that that was where I was confused. I thought that was the one that was being created.
Lot Lot 1 is technically the 58 acres.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for the board? And we're looking for a motion to accept as an A and R plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the A and R plan for land located off Dresser Hill Road and Kobe, I'm going to mispronounce the name again. Kobe Road as presented, assesses map 208 lot 28.1.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Guy.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself also an I unanimous. Short and sweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I gotta find my, here we come. All right, so moving on to our next item. Item 3, request for a minor modification to the plan of Legacy Landing, 61 Airport Road.
Mr. Chairman, as has been the practice in past discussions of this property, I will reduce myself.
Okay.
And John Grenier is here representing the applicant tonight?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. My client, who is Jim Haynes. He is interested in trying to purchase this project and in order for, in his opinion, a successful and viable project. He is requesting to modify the unit style and separation. In the original approved plan, there are a total of 22 units with includes eight duplex style units and three duplex style units. What Mr. Haynes is proposing is to maintain the same unit count, 22 units, and to have these as separated individual units that are, you know, they're not attached by any common wall, they're individual units. He's done this style development on two projects that I've been involved with them on, and they've been very successful. One is in Boylston and one is in Shrewsbury. Both are currently under construction and he's had very good success with this style of multifamily development. He's maintained between a minimum of 15 feet separation and up to 20 feet separation between the individual units. I believe he's had a conversation with the fire department and from that conversation, I believe that they have no issue. They're they think that that's fine, having the 15 to 20 foot separation between units. The roadway is in the same same exact layout design as in the original development. There's a 24 foot wide through driveway that goes from Airport Road out to Dudley Hill Road, so that is in the same alignment. And then on the westerly side, we are the we're proposing five units. There's a 20 foot wide driveway that accesses those five units that are on the west. It's like the northwesterly portion of the site. Utilities, sewer water, hydrants, those are all staying in the same location and fashion as they are under the currently approved design. Once we get into, we'll have to modify some of the grades between the old grading plan and the new in terms of elevations of the units. And but at the end of the day, we're going to maintain having the the main detention basin located at the southeastern side. We may alter the location where that gets transmitted from the roadway to that detention basin, but it will be of similar fashion to what is currently proposed and approved. So that's really the long and short of it. The the main change is really going from attached units, both duplexes and triplexes into detached single units for the total of 22 units. And again, this has been this formula and type of development has been very attractive to buyers in two other projects that we've been involved with over the past couple of years. And we'd like to see this be a successful development in the town of Dudley. So with that, I'd put it to the chair with any questions or comments from the board members.
Guy, Steve, you guys want to start with any questions?
As the we had a chance to speak with the chief, fire chief directly on this.
Steve, I haven't heard from the chief. I sent him an email asking for a comment on the plan, but he didn't have a chance to get back to me.
Because I mean, 15 feet between buildings, I would like to hear that directly from the chief himself, either through, you know, written correspondence or however.
Understood, okay.
The way the way that the way that I'm hearing you say it, the way that I'm hearing the applicant say it is that his understanding is that there was a conversation with the fire department. I want to make sure that that the chief would be okay with this because this is, I don't think that there's anything like this in Dudley prior to this. I wasn't at the I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't want to speak like I was there, but have a conversation with Mr. Haynes and he relayed to me that he spoke with the chief. And the chief did want to see where the hydrant locations were. And we updated the plan to add the location of the hydrants as they were proposed and approved, so he just wanted to see that. So I know there were conversations and my understanding is, again, I wasn't there, but the it was relayed to me from Mr. Haynes that the fire chief was was fine with the layout as proposed. But again, I I am something directly from him.
Do you know any specifications on the building itself? Would he be using like cement siding or something like that that's fire retardant between the buildings?
No, um, there would be a standard, you know, PVC and vinyl siding. I have another project that is developed in Shrewsbury where there are duplexes and the units are up to between buildings, they're up to 10 feet, 10 feet apart. So I think once you get less than 10 feet, then fire code goes in where you have to have, you know, the the fire ratings between buildings where you have to double up the sheet rock and whatnot, but again, I've had projects work as close as 10 feet. And there's no special requirements building code wise for for fire separation.
Well, I would say that I would I would be in line with Steve. I'd like to see a letter from the chief that this is acceptable to him.
Bill, I was I was hoping that you could kind of give just a real quick brief history summary. These units aren't on individual lots. There's really no frontage involved in this. Just kind of get into the brief reasons why this is.
Well, this will be condominium development. Each of the structures is all part of a common plan of development, so there are no individual lots. You may recall a couple of meetings ago, the board met with Randy Waterman from Waterman Design to talk about condition and the decision that would have required definitive plan approval. And since there are actually no division of the land into lots and the road will meet subdivision standards anyway, the board decided that it would not be necessary to require a definitive plan submission. So this will be, you know, all one development and will be managed by homeowners association when it's completed, which will be responsible for the maintaining the road to be will remain a private road. And we'll take care of the open space and the public utilities in the development.
And as far as open space, what we had before and what we have now, has anybody done the calculations to make sure that everything was stayed the same?
Yes, we did. The minimum open space required is 50% open space. And as proposed, we're we're maintaining 55% open space, so we're in excess of of what is required.
What kind of proved the first prime around the 55% 50 or was it more?
You know, it was very similar. I know we we tweaked it a little bit just in placing the units, but I believe it was, I don't know if it was within a percent or two, but it was in the 55% range, if I'm not mistaken.
John, when I spoke with Jim Haynes, he was saying that he would maintain the open space boundaries around the developments. Has that, is that true now that you've actually revised the plan? You can see this is open space boundary that I think was approved in the original plan. Has that, are you doing any any work within that open space boundary?
No, we are not. We are not.
Okay.
I'm having trouble visualizing what we approved. What was a year and a half, two years ago?
I can pull that up, Dan, if you like.
That'd be kind of cool. Because when I first saw this, I saw the minor modification. To me, it was not so minor. But that's just semantics. That's not really an official of the. So it being pulled up?
I'm getting it now. This is the plan that you saw a couple of weeks ago that Randy Waterman had marked up when he came in to request the waiver of the with the release of the condition for the definitive plan. So you can see, for example, over here, these are duplex units on this part of the development. There were duplexes down here. And here's it looks like a three unit structure and another three unit structure here as John described.
And if you if you look at this plan, everything is over 20 feet apart spaced out.
Correct. 20.5 feet.
If you also notice right there next to the units that have name name, well, if you look at the what is that lower left corner right there, there's one, two, three, four parking spaces. Is that would be, I think that was designed for the for the open space, people who want to use open space. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and we don't have those anymore. They're not showing on the new plan, were they?
Yes, we're maintaining those. What about that? Right now, it's on the screen, upper right hand corner. You can just see the bottom part of it. Was the rain garden sea sheet 3.00?
There's one here, Joe.
Yes, they have a they're showing a rain garden that's capturing some of the sheet flow, the driveway. And then to the right of that on the sheet that you're looking at is is the the detention basin. So we would be eliminating that rain garden. But we would be, we're going to have to work with some of the grading to make sure we treat the runoff and then get it into the basin.
All right, but. Can you scroll up to Airport Road? Is there any parking up there?
Excuse me?
Can you scroll up to Airport Road to see, was there any parking for the open spaces up there? No parking there, right? Okay. Can we go back to the other one then, so I can just make sure the parking is there? And then I'm noticing also that we had some kind of a barrier between driveway A and driveway B, so it wouldn't be a temptation for as a cut through or something.
Yes, and we're maintaining a break as well. We did, we shifted it a little bit just to accommodate for a driveway for some of the individual units, but there is that break there with the gate. And again, the road is in the same exact alignment.
All right, yep, I got the I've got the new plan up on my computer now. I'm looking at it. I see the break between driveway A and driveway B. The four parking spaces down there below are still there. Excellent. All right. So board, Steve, Guy, I know Richard is reclosing himself with Steve Guy. Any other issues, questions, other than that, does the distance, the between the two buildings, the 15 feet? We want to get fire department input. Other than that, we're pretty good?
Yeah, I think a letter from the fire chief would be acceptable.
So Bill, should we vote upon acceptance, upon receipt of the letter from the fire department or should we wait till next meeting to vote?
Hey, Dan, I I had one other question.
Go for it, Steve.
I was just curious because we just approved that A and R. So I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around this. So technically, do they not own this part here where this driveway, it says driveway B up at Airport Road where it comes in? Because there's an existing building there, right?
I think so.
There's a garage, I think, that was going to be taken down as part of this development.
Yeah, so my recollection was the A and R was basically dividing the lot or splitting it so the existing two-story wood frame dwelling on Airport Road would be its own property now, and then the development around it behind it. Was that correct, though?
Yes, so that actually created, yes, you're right, it broke off that house as a separate lot from the remainder of the property. And the additional lot that was created will be part of this legacy landing. And that lot that was created, the frontage will be where the the new road will exit out on Airport Road.
Okay.
But so so technically, there's a lot line. There's another lot line here that's not shown on this, correct? Because I mean, that is a separate lot.
Yes, as of the last meeting. Presumably, it's been recorded.
Steve, I think there's some land missing towards the Dudley Hill roadside.
Oh, okay, is that what?
Yeah.
All right.
So should we vote upon and then make a conditional upon receipt of a letter for the fire department, for the fire chief? Or do you guys want to hold off until next meeting? We have that in hand? Nobody?
I think that would be a reasonable approach, Dan, if the board's agreeable that. Because this was intended to be a minor modification, I think, unless you feel that it needs to go to a public hearing if there's, you know, significant changes that you would like to see more detail. You would hold off, but I think if you're fine with the plan as is, as long as the fire chief is comfortable with it, then I think you could vote to approve the minor modification contingent upon the fire chief being okay with it.
Yeah, so I haven't seen the two plans more or less side by side. I was my concerns about it being too much difference, we're basically set aside, looks like the from the, you know, the visual shows that the open spaces are pretty much the same. Buildings are, we went from from 20 feet, five inches, I think it was, down to the 15 feet, 15, wasn't it?
Yep, in some cases.
So we're looking for that. Otherwise, the roads are the same, the parking spots, it looked like everything else is the same. So if the members wants to make a motion to accept upon making a contingent upon receipt of a approval letter from the fire department?
Bill, what was the name of the subdivision again? I'm sorry.
Legacy Landing.
Legacy Landing. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minor modification for Legacy Landing from two and three resident units to single-family resident units with the approval of the spacing between the single-family units down as low as 15 feet with the approval from the Dudley Fire Chief. Conditional of the approval from the Dudley Fire Chief.
I have a motion to accept the minor modifications upon approval, upon receiving, upon the receipt of an approval letter from the fire chief based on the distance between the buildings? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Steve?
Aye.
Gotcha, sorry. Guy?
Aye.
I'm and Richard, you're abstaining. All right.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, call it my agenda in next minutes. Item number four, discussion of proposed zoning amendment regarding marijuana cultivation with Robert and Lynn Doherty, who are on the line and waiting for us. Thank you for your patience.
Lynn, you're muted.
Oh, still muted.
Lynn, can you unmute your audio?
Sorry, I had to I had to mute it. I have geese right outside the window and they're very loud this time of year.
We're farmers.
Back in January, when we attended the first meeting, we were looking for some kind of a way to do outdoor cultivation of marijuana on our farm. It is, outdoor cultivation is legal in Massachusetts. And I believe at the January meeting, when I did my my research, I showed at that point six outdoor grows, if I'm not mistaken. So I I have to tell you, I went on the Cannabis Control Commission website. It's not the most user-friendly website. It's kind of like kind of like looking for a needle in the haystack when you're looking for specific information. But I was able to print the list of current cultivators, marijuana cultivators in the state, as of, I believe it's March 2nd. I apologize, because it was such a tedious process to try and figure out who was doing the outdoor grows and how large their outdoor grows were. I didn't get through them all, but that list, did you provide everyone with the list, Bill?
I did, Lynn, I sent it to them today.
So the list that he provided you, that, those are all current Massachusetts marijuana cultivators. That includes indoor as well as outdoor. I believe I got to the point where I kind of uncovered approximately three-tier 11 outdoor grows in Mass currently. I know there are more, but I, again, I didn't have a chance to get through to all of them. I know there are several tier nines, and there, I did see, I think, one or two tier tens. So there are quite a few large grows, and that map shows approximately how many cultivators there are in each, in each area, in each, so basically, the way Dudley, I guess, wrote up their bylaw as far as, you know, marijuana was concerned. You allowed for cultivation, but it looks like the cultivation would be in the mill district, am I correct, Bill? Or?
Yes, marijuana uses are only allowed in the milk conversion overlay and in the industrial 130 district.
Okay, so the problem, the problem with outdoor cultivation, you really can't cultivate on an old mill property. By nature, most of the old mill properties have some kind of contamination on site. And they are very stringent about how cannabis is grown, you can't use pesticides, you can't use anything other than organic means to make these things grow. Because they will literally, whatever is in the soil, they will pull it out of the soil. Matter of fact, I don't know if you guys are familiar with how they're cleaning up Chernobyl? In the Czech Republic, or they were literally planting marijuana to pull, to pull the chemical residue out of the soil, and it works. And it works, and I will tell you this too, a while ago, we were reading something, I think it was in the Webster Times. There was a mill, I believe in Dudley, that you guys are trying to clean up. I don't know how you're going to get through the logistics with MDR, because they're not fun to work with. But if you could get somebody to grow hemp over there, I think you'd be a lot better off cleaning up the soil with the hemp.
You'd have to prune it at the end.
Which you probably would, because it would be contaminated as a result. But anyway, I digress. So I've been kind of going back and forth with Bill, trying to figure out what the best way would be to to approach this, this little conundrum that we're in. We definitely, I mean, we've been growing hemp for the last two years, we told you that. The plants were beautiful, and through no fault of anything we did, for the most part, they went hot and had to be destroyed. And another item I would like to bring up that I read on the Cannabis Control website, I believe, I don't know if it came out in February or March, but they talked about the fact that over 40% of the hemp crop in the state of Massachusetts in 2020 had to be destroyed. So it wasn't just the tareties that lost the hemp. It's like, it's just the nature of the beast right now. We've actually gotten to the point where, I mean, we have very good luck growing the plant. We just don't have any luck with it, the way the genetics are set up. We, we have a marijuana facility in central Mass that's approached us, they would buy whatever we could grow. So we have an opportunity to do this. We wouldn't be doing anything different from what we've done the last two years, in fact, we're going to, we're going to do it again this year. I think we, we just are a glutton for punishment, I don't know, but, um, but we would like to, to create this overlay so that it would allow not just us, but this, you have a couple of farms in town, nice farms, that are really just, they're not being utilized, and the farmers aren't making any money. And if they could make a little bit of money, and if the town could make some money, and you would make some good money doing this, I think it would be a win-win situation. So I'm hoping that you see it for what it is, it's an opportunity. When I tell you Massachusetts is, is really diving into this, you can see how many different towns have gotten into it, it's, it's going to be making money going forward. This is a win-win for the town, it's a win for your, your farmers. And it's only going to get bigger and bigger. I, I kind of liken it to alcohol, to be quite honest with you. I mean, there's a market for alcohol, there's a market for cannabis, and it's not just the cannabis that gets you high. There are other uses for cannabis, and people want it, especially for pain, I guess. I don't, I don't use it myself, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, but I've, I've been told by many, many people that they swear by cannabis products because it does help them. So I'm hoping that the town, town planning board will look at this as an opportunity, you know, for the town itself to grow, and, no pun intended. And I'm hoping that you would approve what, what it is that we're trying to do, and maybe sponsor this article on the warrant. Put it before the town, see if, see if, you know, everybody else in town thinks, you know what, this might be a good idea. I mean, we haven't had any issues on our farm, and I can tell you, I mean, our, our property is very private. But if we get licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission, it's going to get much more security than it already has, because they don't fool around. I mean, they, they are very strict about the record-keeping piece, about the security piece. There's not going to be anyone coming and going on the property that doesn't belong there. And we are hoping that if we can get up and running, we might be able to hire a couple of people that can help mom and pop, because mom and pop are so young. But, um, I don't know, we just think it's a really good opportunity, and, and we're hoping that you guys would support it. And, and that you would sponsor this, because we think it's a good thing for the town. It's the up and coming thing, I don't think it's going anywhere anytime soon. And if Dudley can get in on it and make some money, and if their farmers can, you know, can benefit from this, I say why not?
You had mentioned a tier 11 growers, how big is that? What's the size?
Tier 11 is 100,000 square feet. I think Dudley's bylaw limited it to seven, tier seven, and I think that might be either 60,000 or 70,000 square feet, it's like an acre and a half.
It's 60,000 square feet for tier seven.
It's an acre and a half, and I can tell you, excuse me, we've grown a lot more than that. But if we were growing cannabis, we would grow less, but it would be valued at more. And it probably be a little bit more manageable for us, to be quite honest with you.
And if I could ask someone, how many acres you guys have?
We have 55 acres. And the field that we grew in the last couple of years, I mean, it's very, very private, I think we showed it on the map at the last meeting. Nobody bothers it, it's, and the only time that there's really, I mean, we're a farm, so I guess we're not subject to the smell test, but the only time our crop really smelled at all was at the very end of the season, I want to say like the last, what? Maybe two weeks is when you smell it, because now that the flowers are, they're at, you know, their peak, so. And, and I think we're far enough away, we haven't heard any complaints from anyone. So, I mean, we're, we're pretty quiet people, we keep to ourselves, we're farmers, all we want to do is farm.
I will address the planning board, any questions?
Yeah, well, just to speak to, to, to the applicant's point, I'm sorry, you're not really an applicant, but just to speak to your point, and just kind of to explain the whole mill overlay district, the reason why it's permitted there, I mean, I understand your point about the soil and those types of properties not being, I mean, being contaminated, so not being feasible for growth. But that was never the intention of that, the intention of those sites was to be indoor grow facilities, where it's all grown hydroponically, or if there's any soil used at all, they're, they're bringing it in.
And you know, that's a very good point, that's a very good point, but I would, I would say this. One of the things that attracted us to Dudley is the fact that it's a green community. And we are trying to be as green on that property as green gets. I mean, we're not, we have solar on our house, when our barn is constructed, we're going to have solar on the barn. We have our own well that we are setting up our irrigation from, we're going to be self-sufficient, and we're not going to be using any resources, any natural resources.
When you say an outdoor grow facility, if, if I have a farm and I set up an operation like you're talking about, if I grow the stuff inside of a greenhouse, is that considered an outdoor grow facility?
No, no, it is not.
So you're talking about?
You're literally, you're planting the, the plants or the seeds in the ground.
Okay.
You tend them all season, the only light they're getting is from the sun. So you're kind of, you are at mother nature's mercy, but at the same time, they grow, the plants grow better, they grow healthier. And again, when you grow cannabis, you can't use chemicals, you can't use too many different fertilizers. I mean, you can use organic stuff, basically, it has to be OMRI certified. So, because people will, will ingest this in some, in some forms sometimes. So essentially, you're, you're growing it with sun and water, you know, and probably chicken manure. But I mean, you have to, as a result, you have to give these plants a lot of room, that's why.
How is the crop handled after you harvested? Is it like, you cut it and it literally goes on trucks and leaves, or does it stay there and get dry?
That's what's going to happen going forward, if we can do this, yes, because the way we were harvesting before was
A lot of work.
Brutal. That's being kind. But yeah, that, all they want us to do is grow it. Once it's, it's ready for harvest, we cut it down, they send their own trucks down, they load it all on the trucks. All of the paperwork is done, and then it ships out. We're not going to process anything on our farm, we're not going to make any products, we're not doing anything, we're, we're farmers, we're growing.
Have you spoken to any other farmers in town and heard anything from them about their interest in getting in on this?
I did talk to, I talked to three farmers, two of them were very positive, one was not nice at all. Um, and, and I, I'm not going to name any names, but not nice at all. And, and you know what? I get that some people still have heartburn with it, but let's face it, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know, some of you guys are pretty young, so I guess I, I'm dating myself, but think about prohibition. When prohibition ended, people were losing their minds, you cannot allow people to drink. Guess what? People drink.
Yeah, I personally, I'm beyond that. Drink. I'm beyond that stage, as far as the philosophical argument, I'm not even going to bother trying to have that anymore with anybody, so. I'm just kind of curious, did any of the other board members catch Monday night's selectments meeting?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, answer Mr. Watrow, yes, I did, and I, I think where you're going is with Fish Road. If I may, I, I do have a couple of questions for the Dohertys, if I could get, get back to that if possible. This is Doherty, Mr. Doherty, I appreciate your efforts, and obviously, you're on the small end in terms of this business, and we've already approved a very large producer in town, and a not quite so large producer on Fish Road, as Mr. Watrow has already, I think, alluded to. A question for you, is the crop that you're going to raise intended for medicinal purposes? You mentioned it says some healing properties or curative properties, or is this just recreational? Or is there a mix in some way of distinguishing between?
I believe, I believe the company that, that we would grow for does both. And they're, they're looking, because they, they've asked us to, to grow hemp, like different strains of hemp, and I will tell you this. After being burned two years in a row, I have no desire to grow anything for CBD or the other cannabinoids, we're going to grow CBG right now, because that doesn't go hot, that's what we'll grow this year. But they want to process and pull out these other minor cannabinoids, because they do have medicinal properties, they, they are good for pain, they're good for, what's the word I'm looking for? Like people that are anxious, I don't, anxiety, yes, they, they use it for various things, but they're not, they're not to the point where they medicate you so that you're, you know, you don't know what's going on, I mean, it's just enough, I guess. I heard it, I heard the term that takes the edge off, I guess that's the best way to, to describe it.
Okay, if I may, the, the, that you've referred to, they've mentioned about several times. They, I assume, are licensed to the state of Massachusetts and licensed.
The company that we're, that we're going to sell to?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're already licensed, and they're up and running.
I'm sorry, can you identify them by name, or is that something that's still to negotiate?
It's not really in negotiations. Yeah, we didn't ask them if we could, if we could reveal it.
Okay, well, I'll leave that to your discretion. I know that mention has been made, and some people have already got past this in the philosophical sense. I had occasion to hear former Congressman Patrick Kennedy speak about marijuana, and I don't know, Mr. Doherty, whether you've had any opportunity to hear him, he's a man who has suffered from addictions for a number of years. And is adamantly opposed to the growth of marijuana, at least as far as recreational purposes are concerned. I found him to be very articulate, very forthright in terms of his presentation, and I, I, I understand that this is like trying to get in front of a bulldozer that's going downhill. But my intent, if this comes to a motion before the board, would be to abstain.
Well, let me, let me say this, I'm former federal law enforcement, okay, 29 years, I have children, I have grandchildren. And I have had dealings with other federal agencies. People tend to, so what I'm looking for, to inflate the issues with cannabis. I think that's why, I think that's why states acquiesced and made it legal, I believe that it's going to be legal federally very shortly, because the Biden administration is leaning in that direction. It's like alcohol, people shouldn't drink alcohol, some people should not drink alcohol, other people can drink it and not have a problem. It's the same with cannabis. I respect, I respect your opinion, but again, it, it goes back to that, everyone has choices, it is legal in Massachusetts, it's legal to grow it, it's legal to make it into various different products, it's legal to smoke it. It's all, it's all up to you if you're an adult, and in Massachusetts, you as an individual can grow six marijuana plants legally on your property, 12 if there are two adults in the household, we're not looking at that, we're looking at commercial growing. And it's going to grow.
I have a question for.
And it's going to leave.
I have a question for Bill, actually. Bill, I'm wondering if, if this were to go to town meeting and be approved, this overlay district. The planning board can still set parameters, correct, as to like, say, minimum lot sizes and things like that?
Yes, it would require a special permit, so you would have the ability to impose conditions on every application that comes to you for the special permit.
Yeah, but what about, what about conditions that would be required before, regardless of who the applicant was, I guess? As opposed to having to say to every applicant, you have to have X amount of space?
Well, if, if the Dohertys go ahead with the landowner petition, you can't change it, so you would have to accept it as presented. If the planning board sponsors the article, then you can draft it in a manner that you feel comfortable with. So if you wanted to have requirements like minimum lot size or distances from other buttering houses or buffer zones, or whatever you felt was appropriate, you could draft those into your own language.
That's exactly what I'm thinking, I don't know about you, you guys, Dan, you know, Guy, you guys, don't you think that it would be better if, if right out of the gate, that Don't you think that it would be better if, if right out of the gate that, uh. By having the planning board involved, we're able to put language in there. Um, that way we're not dealing with everybody who's got two acres coming before and saying, hey, I want to go into the. I want to go into business for myself doing this. Um, and then you've got. Then I can envision, we've got these meetings where, you know. All the neighbors come in and they all start yelling about how it's, it's, the house is too close and. Uh, but as opposed to a farmer who's got fifty acres.
Right.
Can put a, can put an operation on fifty acres. That's, uh, you know. I, I can't imagine that that's going to be any more of a nuisance than if they were growing, uh. Hay or potatoes or whatever.
The other thing about the overlay district is that every applicant that comes forward and asks us to be added to the overlay district. It would have to go back to town meeting. So. If. Even if the applicant met all the requirements and went back to town meeting. If that particular applicant, if there was a, if there was opposition for that particular applicant and it didn't get voted in at town meeting. That, that particular applicant wouldn't get, wouldn't get permission to be in the overlay district. So there's, like, it does give the, the townspeople the choice. Is it going to be grown here or is it going to be grown there or, or not here? With the overlay district, because every time somebody asks us to be added to the overlay district. First, we gotta, we gotta put in a, a article to establish the overlay district. Once it's established. People can come forward and ask to be added to it. But every time they're going to be added to it, it's going to go back for a vote of town meeting.
Okay, correct, Bill?
Yes.
And the town limits, the town limit on this is seven, seven growers?
No, that's a tier seven. Uh, which is a parameter for how much canopy space you can grow. So the existing zoning bylaw limits outdoor cultivation to a tier seven license from the C C C. Which is sixty thousand square feet. But there's no limit on the number of growers in the town.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's why it might be a good idea if we were able to limit it.
Right. And this other thing is, is as we've experienced in the past, if for some reason it doesn't get passed at one town meeting, they just put it on the docket for the next one. It just gets pushed on down the line. And so to try to get this moving along. Um. I personally cannot tell you how much I'm against this. But. I might act it from a personal standpoint right now, unfortunately for me. Um, I have lots of law enforcement in the family from a Georgia state trooper to. My uncle used to work with the D A A, DEA. And then, uh, I've got. Family who's in local Massachusetts and police forces. So I have a little bit of insight, but, um, to get to. The item here, what was, what's being said with Steve and Guy have both agreed on. Um. As a planning board member or chairman. Right now, I don't see anything that would be. Detrimental to the town in any way right now in this. Um, I think it would be. Be almost behoove the planning board and try to get behind this so that we could, as Steve and Guy pointed out. Put some rules and regulations in place so that we don't have everybody in town. And getting rid of the garage and trying to plant plants. So, um. Bill, what kind of, what kind of action I'll be looking for here?
Well, it's an informal discussion tonight, Dan. So I think the Doherty's are just asking you if you would. Sponsor the article to create this marijuana cultivation overlay.
We've also learned in the past, as we get caught in these preliminary and informals and we talk about it and we kind of go on record and all of a sudden it was no longer informal. Now it was formal. Yeah. So are we looking for a formal vote or are we looking for an informal opinion? Or what are we looking for here?
Well, the Doherty's have a deadline. If, if they go forward with it, with it as a landowner petition, the warrant closes, I think, in about a week and a half. So they need to know now whether they need to file a landowner petition or if the planning board is going to sponsor an article.
Right. So in theory, we could be looking for a motion from one of the planning board members to support this article. For to support a, and we don't have an actual article yet. So who'd be writing, responsible for writing the article?
I would.
You would be?
Yes.
Okay.
So you could put, so Bill, you could put language in there that. That we could give you feedback on, correct? Prior to us, okay.
Sure, that would be the point.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah. So that I would certainly prepare a draft and welcome you and put into it.
Okay. So that, that's, that's the way I think we should go.
I would agree. Richard, you're no longer muted. You still abstaining or?
Uh, I appreciate the thought that we want to get some control over this. Uh. I think it's already been mentioned that effectively we can't do that much. I had checked with the Kansas Control Commission and. Apparently there is no limit on the number of growers you could have in any community. So, uh. The, uh, the dam is burst, gentlemen, and, uh, we're just gonna. Either roll with the punches, get in the boat, I guess, and try to row successfully or as close as we can to shore with this thing. Um, I. Uh, again, I, 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 this is not something near and dear to my heart by any stretch of the imagination, but I.
Richard, look at it this way. If we put in a limitation and said you have to have a minimum of twenty five acres to do this. Boom, right there. I just limited the number.
You're right. You're right. And the, the only effective way we can deal with this is to try and impose or. To develop or create some kind of a limit, if you will. You know, like putting a speed limit up on a roadway, you might discourage a few people from going over the limit. But, uh, yeah, okay, I, I, I can see the sense of that. And I think, uh. With that in mind, uh, maybe we should go forward with this and let the town make the ultimate decision.
Yeah. And I just want to kind of, sorry, Guy, go on. Do you want to say something?
I agree. I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Clark.
Okay. But just a word of caution. If we decide to put a limit on it and set it at what you want, twenty five, twenty four, there's going to be someone with twenty five, twenty four point one or twenty three point five acres who's going to challenge that at some point in time. And then we have to start talking to town council either before or after to try to find out precedent, why we made that number is so, so arbitrary or not arbitrary. So getting behind this could cause some temporary relief from limiting it, but eventually. Until precedent starts to get set, we're going down, in my opinion, a slippery slope. All right. So, um. Board want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, um, we asked the town planner to, uh, put together a draft. Um, for cannabis overlay district for the town of Dudley. To be presented at the next town meeting in May.
All right, I have a well, yep, I have a well, well, well-upformed motion on this subject. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to get behind this effort and put together a, um, warrant article for the next town meeting. Roll call vote, Guy.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
And myself hesitantly, but aye. All right. Unanimous, Bill.
Hey. Thank you, Leonard Robert.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for your time.
I'm going to have to get out because my back is killing me. I've been working on the bomb all day. Maybe we can hire some help someday.
Thank you.
So Bill, I know that we have a, um, an agenda and we have items. Uh. Printed in order. Do we have to stick to that order?
Uh, well, we have some folks from C M F C who've been waiting, Dan. So, um. You could.
Understood, but I, correct me if I'm wrong. That's going to take a lot longer than, um. Than our. Other guest, right?
Yes.
So if. Gemma, gonna just touch base to you real quick. We have an item under one of our subdivisions. I just want to touch base real quick on, uh, we're trying to get it approved. Or to get it before the town meeting to get it approved. There's a couple of questions about some guardrails. That shouldn't take too long to, to clear up. Would you mind terribly if we tried to get that taken care of in the next five, 10 minutes?
No, that's fine. That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Bill, you want to introduce and get this one rolling?
Yes, Dick Andrew Levitt is here, uh, virtually in the meeting. Um. The thought is to just sort of talk informally about Tobin Farm. Which as Dan mentioned, uh, will be coming up to town meeting for acceptance. Uh, the board has had a couple of questions about guardrails. So I invited, um. Uh, a representative of the development to come tonight to speak to the board about. Their understanding of the guardrails and for the board to ask questions about it and hopefully come to an understanding of how to move forward.
Bill, if I may, I, I did try, I, I apologize for the amateur photography, but I did try to take pictures of. What I identified as some guardrails and another area, uh, in that development where I, I was curious as to why the weren't guardrails. I don't know whether you have those available or not, or I mean, you may have looked at them and said, uh, they're not, uh, you know, ready for prime time and I can purpose. Very well understand that.
I thought we had a, a problem, Richard, with, with my receiving those photos.
Okay, no, that's quite all right. Again, uh, not Matthew Brady, but anyways.
Do you want to describe what, what they were about?
Well, I, I believe the, the, the one that raised the question was, I think it's on Tobin Drive. Uh, there is an area there, uh, where there's some sort of a retaining wall on either side of the road. There is no guardrail, but there's a rather severe drop off. Uh, there, there's some vegetation, I guess, would slow something down, but certainly not a vehicle of any size. Uh, on the other hand, I think it's on Nellie's Way, is it? There's, there are, uh, rather substantial guardrails on either side of the road. And it looks very much like the same topography as you find on Tobin Road. Uh, in other words, that's similar drop off. Uh, just wondering, are we missing something on Tobin that we have on Nellie or? Have we overbuilt on Nellie and what required to do so?
It's actually not Nellie's Way.
Not Nellie's Way?
No, uh, I keep forgetting the name of it. There's a little short street that runs from Nellie's Way to Stebbins Drive.
Summer?
That's it.
Okay, you did see though that there were, uh, guardrails.
Summer has the existing guardrails.
Yeah, okay.
And Tobin Drive does not have the guardrails. What you're describing as the retaining wall, it's wetland crossing. Um, Bill LePage and I went out there last week and we dropped a tape measure off that wall on both of those, on both sides, on both of those drives. And we looked at it. There's not much difference in height. So the question was, if they were requiring guardrails on summer, why? Why wouldn't they require them on Tobin? That's the question. That, you know, we would, we were batting around. In the hope that maybe, well, if the drop wasn't as bad over on Tobin Drive, then, then maybe that would be the reasoning behind not having that. To put them up there. But I think the answer, and I got to tell you guys. You know, we, it, we went to almost ten o'clock that night with that meeting. And as soon as I got off, I went online. And the town just revamped the website. So you can't even do this now, but a couple of weeks ago, you could go online and you could look at minutes going back. Planning board meeting minutes and videos going back several years. I think I went back to two thousand seventeen. I, I watched a lot of videos on this, a lot of meetings. Uh, Guy, you were actually, you were actually, uh, chair at a lot of those meetings. And the thing that kept coming up. And Guy made some really good points at, at the time. The big sticking point was sidewalks. The lack of sidewalks, the lack of completion of sidewalks. And the talk was, we're kind of in a pickle here where. You know, if we accept the subdivision as it is. Um. And the sidewalks aren't completed, that. Somebody could come in and. My understanding was that this actually happened in another, another town somewhere where. Uh, a handicapped individual moved into a house where they had a, they had a family member that was handicapped. There were no sidewalks in front of the house. Sidewalks were supposed to be in that subdivision, so they were able to go and actually force the town's hand. And the town had to pay to put sidewalks in. Does that sound, does that sound familiar, Guy? I don't remember the detail.
Let me, let me stop everybody for a second. Okay, there's been a question asked about the guardrails. And now we're talking about sidewalks. So let's take one thing at a time and allow the answer to be given about the guardrails.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, let me, um, my name is Dick Andrew Levitt. Um, I'm the president of Rapid Co Construction. Um, it's kind of a peculiar way how I got involved in this project. We, as a company, were approached by the then-town administrator, Greg Belkonis. The then-town planner, Nancy Runkel. And by members of the people that live in that subdivision. Mostly the people that live on the back street, and I'm not sure what the name of it, I think it's Stebbins Drive, I think. Um. The town planner and the town administrator came to me, we had a meeting up there. And because basically the town was getting, I mean, he was stuck with this project. They wanted to see if there was a way with the money that the town had in escrow, if, what they could finish. With this project for the money that they had available. So this is what we do for a living. So I says, listen, I says. Before I can give you what I will, what I'm going to do, I said, what I would like to do is I would like to meet with the town administrator, I mean, with the, uh. Town engineer, who was Jeff Walsh. I says, and have Jeff come out here. I says, and Jeff and I. And the town planner and you, Mr. Belkonis, can go over this and discuss this together to see. What we thought was the best scenario for the town and the people there to get this project completed and accepted. So a long story short is we put together a proposal to finish the project as, as it was proposed. When it, you know, when it went out, uh, when, when it was originally proposed. When, which we knew was going to be way too much money, then it was going to be a lot more money with the town it had in escrow. So Greg Belkonis, Nancy Runkel, and Jeff says. Let's have a meeting out there and let's see if we can put our heads together. And see what we can do to make this acceptable and get the people over there happy. And see what could be done. So. Since there were so many. There was a couple of handfuls of issues that were not completed as far as that subdivision went. Um, the, I'm going to give you the big items. The big items were the drainage from Tobin Farm Road. To Dudley Oxford Road. It was supposed to be, it was two catch bases at the end of the road. There was a manhole that was supposed to be installed. The manhole was never installed. The two catch bases just filled up with water running down the street. They flooded. The water would run out at the Dudley Oxford Road. The original plan says that they were supposed to go into Dudley Oxford Road, put a manhole in. And put roughly two hundred feet of pipe down gradient and dump it off into that little pond that's there. So we put the proposal together. I says, there's a significant amount of money here that's going to be spent here, I says, doing this. The then-highway superintendent was Dan Guyan, was at that meeting also. And he says, why are we putting this pipe in a road? So I said to Mr. Guyan, I said, because number one, it's on the plan. I says, do you have an objection to that? He says, well. He says, it seems to me that the town, that there was not enough money in escrow yet. I says, you're absolutely right. I says, we're going to try to find a way to. Alleviate as much of this as possible. So what we came up with, with Jeff Walsh's input. Was we took those two catch basins and we installed the manhole in the taking on the corner of Tobin Drive and. Uh, Dudley Oxford Road. We then ran the pipe down the, off the shoulder of the road, down about a hundred feet, hundred twenty-five feet, if I remember right. And we came into the side of an existing catch basin that was already in the road. So what that did is it alleviated all the money between police details. Digging out in the street, repaving a section of road and putting a, dude, a two hundred feet of pipe in, which Mr. Guyan didn't want to do. Because he said the integrity of that pipe in the road was already compromised. So he said he didn't want us to attach a new pipe to an old one, leaving compacted material versus. When you put material back in, in a fresh dig, we compact it, but it's not, you know, it's, they say it's a hundred percent, it's ninety-eight percent, it's not a hundred. It's, that's what it is. Um, so he was against that. So we came up with that issue. So that issue, as far as that drainage was, was resolved. There was another drainage issue on. Uh, the, so I think that's Summer Street, the one that's got the guardrails on it. There was a drain pipe that was put in there when it was installed. Supposedly inspected. It was the wrong diameter pipe. So it was only about, again, about a hundred foot run of pipe. So we ended up digging that pipe up. We replaced it. I think it was twelve inch that was in there. I think we installed an eighteen inch pipe. Then it was a section of road that was, since the road was only in binder. It was a good section of the lower road that was all broken up and the integrity of road was basically, nothing was left there. So I said to Jeff, I says, what are we going to do with this here? I says, to me. We can't put a mat down and glue this back down and put a top coat on this. I said, we have to take this up to make this road. If it's going to stand up, it's going to stand the test of time. We had to rip this section of road up. I says, and that's what I think we should do. Jeff agreed. that's what I think we should do, Jeff agreed. So what that did is it took, it took some money away from the project as far as, let's say, let's say if the money was gonna go to the sidewalks. It took a section of the money, of sidewalk money out and put it towards that road reconstruction. Then all the neighbors in the backup there, they all got together and they said, none of them wanted sidewalks in that back section of the road. So, again, Nancy Runk was there, Greg Belkonis was there. All the neighbors were there, had a meeting, it was on a Saturday morning. And they all agreed that they didn't want the sidewalks in, and they said that the planning board would waive the sidewalks. So, like I says, all that I was there is the contractor fixed what was there. What happened, what transpired, I don't know as far as the planning board goes. I was just, I'm gonna need an assumption that the planning board waived those sidewalks. The walls and the guardrails that were there. Mr. Slingo, who was one of the previous, well, still is the owner, I guess, of record. He had some of the guardrail material at his house or wherever it was. He agreed to put that guardrail in. The lower section of guardrail was, Stephen, you guys measured, that was a considerable drop off. Whichever the name of that road was, Tobin Drive or whatever. The highway superintendent then, who was Dan Guyan, said that they had some leftover guardrail from a project that they had completed, and he said he could donate it to that section of, over there to, to get this road accepted. So I don't know if that ever got put in, I'm assuming it didn't because I haven't been back there. I know the upper one got set because Mr. Slingo had told me it got set. I went over there and I looked, yes, it was, it is set up. The lowest section was never put in, but the agreement was that the highway superintendent said that he was gonna supply the post and the guardrail to do that at the time, just to get, to get the road to acceptance. So everything on that road basically was finished, other than there were some blocks on the wall, if you noticed. Some of the rest of the blocks were missing. I think the kids, over time, kicked them off, they got, what if frost knocked them off, the kids kicked them off, whatever happened. If you look down and, you know, down in the wetland, they're sitting down in there, those never got picked back up because there was never money enough to do any of that. The retention basins that were there, if I remember right, there was four of them. Two were completed. A third one was about seven eighths completed, and one was never touched. So, as a conservation commission chairman, I got ahold of our agent Matt Morrow, and I had Matt come out and look at the detention basin areas and what could be done, what couldn't be done, what was the best thing to be done. Mr. Morrow says, the two basins that were there that were already approved, he says, are working, they're working fine. The third basin, he said, that's seven eighths completed. He said, the only thing that wasn't done, which I agreed with him, was there was no topsoil put on it, but vegetation was already growing in it. So from a conservation point of view, it was already stable. So, since the lot next door to the access to that property belonged to Mr. Dudo, who owned that land originally, Mr. Dudo sold that land to Mr. Teegis. Mr. Teegis went and finished, he planted grass on that lot. So we had no access to that detention basin. Would Mr. Teegis have granted us the right to? Yes, he would have. But, again, going back, that detention basin was already stable, it was already working. We weren't gonna go in there and it's, from like I said, a conservation point of view, to put down six or several more loads alone to grow some grass on it when it was already, you know, vegetation was growing there. The one at the bottom of the hill, by Mr. Lavoy's house, was never touched. The water goes out into a wetland area. But Mr. Morrow's opinion, which I agreed with him also, was, if you look at that, where that pipe discharges off of that road, about 25 feet in, there was a natural berm in that wetland. So, again, since the money wasn't available, Matt called the DEP and we asked DEP if it was okay if we left that alone, or should that be constructed and would the town have to pay for this? And the DEP said, we're gonna leave that to your and your consultancy, your conservation commissions of discretion. They said, if it's working, you know, why play with something that's working? You know, why, why play with it if it's already working, leave it alone? Why disturb it? So, we said, we're not gonna bother, we're not gonna disturb it, the money wasn't available to do that. The bottom line here basically was to get that road to the best that it could possibly be, which it is. It's a very stable road. The roads are all overlaid, they're all brought up to code, they're all, all the formations were signed off, all the work we did. Everything we did that was signed off, Jeff Walsh did all the inspections for the town. And when we left there, the neighbors were told by the then-town planner and by Mr. Belkonis that the road now can be accepted by the town, they were gonna accept it, they wanna waive the road, the sidewalks. The guardrail's gonna be put in by the highway department. And the only thing that was left to do was Mr. Slingo was gonna put the bounds in, which he did do. He did whoop him and put the bounds in. And Mrs. Runkel at the time said that there was 12 or 13,000 dollars left in an escrow account, a separate escrow account for that project, where they could have the mylaws done. So, Jeremy Croto, who was on just, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, he is the one who did the mylaws in the as-built plan for that project. And so those are completed, but they were paid for, from my understanding, out of that escrow account, you know, that $11,000. But the project was insufficient. There was quite a deficiency, there was probably a 70 or 80,000 dollar deficiency there to finish that project. You know?
I think it was 13,000. Yeah, I think it was 13,000 left in that account, and I believe the discussion that I saw was that they had an engineer who would agree to do the as-built and the meets and bounds for 10,000.
Great.
Okay, I remember there was a discussion that he insisted on being paid directly through the town, so there was a whole thing about that money coming and going through the town to pay the engineer. Because he wanted 5,000 upfront or something like that. So, Dan, getting back to your point, because you thought I went off tangent with the whole sidewalk thing. And the reason why I brought up the sidewalk thing was because I went and looked at all those meetings, and I can't find one meeting where anybody talked about waiving the sidewalks. The last meet, the last meetings where it even came up, it was actually still more of a discussion about the pitfalls of the town accepting that subdivision without the sidewalks completed. And then Guy was the chair, and Dan, you had come on as a member. And then Guy had attended a selectmen's meeting to talk about, what are we gonna do about this situation with the subdivision? And as I recall, I think Paul Joseph, a selectman at the time, he made a, he made a statement about kind of like a word of warning to the planning board about putting the town in any kind of a, any kind of a bind. So, I didn't see anybody offering any solutions here. I think it's a real pickle. And, and I understand, you know, Dickie, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, Dan Guyan said, oh, that the town will take care of the guardrails. But the problem is, you know, he's not even with us anymore.
No, did you, that's the problem, Steve, is, like I said, the agreements that were made, and I mean, Jeff Walsh can attest to this, because Jeff Walsh was, you know, he was, he's the town engineer, and I'm assuming he still is. He can attest to everything that, you know, that I've said, and he can attest to who was at those meetings, and he could attest to what I told you is what those people, you know, the town planner and the town administrator at the time, you know, said, they said, as far as they were concerned, everything was okay. The road could be accepted, and the planning board was gonna do its part to waive the sidewalks and, you know, the rest of it, and you know, that was the end of it. And you know, it was up to, it was, you know, my understanding that that was done. You know, as far as we were concerned, that was done. And I don't know anymore that, what you're telling me, Steve, is if the planning board, there's no minutes of those meetings, I have no knowledge of that. I can only tell you what the administrator, what the planner told the people in the back of that subdivision what they were gonna do. Now, to me, that puts the town in kind of a pickle too, because you still had people who were still in power at the time. You know, telling people that are sitting there still, the own house is there, that they're gonna do this and that, and and now we're sitting over here, now we're saying that we're not gonna waive sidewalks, you know, possibly not waive sidewalks, or possibly not accept the subdivision, when that, that's not what was discussed, you know? I mean, and I'm not trying to push anymore either way, I'm only telling you from what, you know, if I had to go testify, I'm gonna testify to what I know, you know, and that's what it was, you know? That's.
Thank you, everyone, let me just put a stop to this for a second. Bill, what are we here to discuss? We're here to ask a couple of questions, right? About the guardrails, this is supposed to be on the town meeting, the, the war for the town meeting, right, coming up?
Yes, the planning board has to make a report to town meeting on the completion of the roadway.
All right, so we have to make it, okay, so reporting on the completion, and this discussion was supposed to be about the guardrails which came up. If the guardrails are acceptable now, we just got an excellent account of what had happened and why the guardrails aren't how they're supposed to be, the money was spent in different areas. I, I don't know where this talk about the sidewalk is coming up, I'm not sure if it's relevant right now. There were there were discussions and agreements made between town officials and others. What do we need to discuss here, Bill? I don't want to go back and forth anymore just because he said, she said, I want to know what we're here for and what we're talking about so we can move on.
Well, I think the, the issue is whether the planning board would support the acceptance of the streets. So if you're not comfortable with this, with the guardrail issue, then that would have to be fixed somehow.
I personally just heard an excellent, excellent explanation for how the town and, and Mr. Adrelis took care of everything, made sure that we have drainage piping that was missing, or we, or is taking care, binder was repaired. Streets are in excellent condition, we had some work done on the retention basins. And those were the items that got taken care of, that was the agreement made, so I don't know. And then it came about the, about the guardrails, which I just got, for my opinion, a satisfactory explanation about. Is the planning board ready to, to accept this? And have a meeting or not?
Mr. Chairman, just, just one more, just one more thing. There was a letter sent, there was a letter sent to the planning board or whoever, from this highway superintendent after Mr. Guyan. Vin Paletta was his name. He wrote a letter also stating that he was in favor of that getting accepted, because that was, you know, again, that letter came from him and went to the town. I know that for a fact because Vinny had told me that he had brought the letter over to, I don't know if it was the then-town, town planner, whoever, you know, whoever it was, but Mr. Paletta did write a letter, you know?
I do have that letter.
Am I right, Bill? Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we did have, as you noted, we've had a very lengthy explanation as to what has happened, but we really seem to be kind of short on what didn't happen. I saw that memo flash up back for July of 2018, I believe, from Don Johnson. Waivers requested, is there any documentation to indicate that those waivers were ever approved? And I think that's, that's where we fall short, because it looks like the Mr. Woodtobin's research, whatever was proposed, whatever was discussed, whatever Saturday meeting might have taken place, or whatever show of hands it might have been.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to open up a can of worms here, but.
To prove that this actually occurred, or if anything is binding or has been agreed to in a proper form.
We have two board members with us tonight that were on that board. Can any one of them tell me whether or not they granted waivers for sidewalks in that subdivision?
I don't remember ever granting them, but I do remember going to a board of selectmen meeting and asking what to do. And I was told by the board of selectmen to just grant the side, grant the waiver for the sidewalks. They would, they would take responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, you know, everybody's recollection, you know, and we're talking things that were months, years ago, if you will. I think we need something in the way of a document. I don't think, you know, I, I'm sure Mr. Horn is very accurate in his recollection, but there's just too much that seems, well, loose ends, too many loose ends, if you will, here. And we need some kind of document ahead of this. If there wasn't any action taken, then we need to determine that. If there was action taken, we need to determine what that was, when it was, and was that appropriate?
I know there was one, I know there was one other person who went with me to that meeting. Dan, was it you that went with me?
That was me, I was there with you, guy.
So we were, we were in the office of the Board of Selectmen that night. It was only, I think, two or three members of the Board of Selectmen that came to that meeting with the town administrator, and they were, they, they just said, we have, you know, we got no choice in this matter, let's just waive the sidewalks. And I said, okay, we'll, we'll waive them, but I don't ever remember it coming to, coming to a meeting.
That was, that was a public, public selectmen's meeting?
No.
No.
Well, that would explain why I can't find it.
You described it, Mr. Horn, it had no legal standing, as far as I can determine.
But that's what they, that's what they, that's what they instructed us to do.
Well, they, yes.
Guys, I'm walking. Bill, Bill, since this is taking on a life that I had, did not expect based on the, the meetings that we've had before, which is supposed to be about guardrails, is it possible for us to table this right now, for us to thank Mr. Adrelis for being here? And then to get back with Gemma and her team and to come back to this at a later time with the meeting?
Sure, Dana, yeah, and I think maybe I, with Michelle, could do some more research on this question, maybe, and I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting with whatever official actions the planning board took.
Okay.
Bill, can I, can I say one more thing, Mr. Chairman? I think, I think the people in that subdivision, I think their hearts are set on the fact that they've been told that this was gonna be accepted at this town meeting, you know, and I don't wanna, I'm not trying to make light of this to anybody, or or it's in anybody's mouth, I mean, those people were told some certain things, and I think, I'm not trying to steer your vote one way or the other, because it doesn't make a bit of difference to me what happens here. It's just that I'm only giving you my professional opinion, what happened there, I can tell you what happened there, I can tell you who was there, who said what, what was promised, what was said. And I think those people deserve, they're taxpayers in town, like the rest of us, I think they deserve an answer, you know? If it's gonna be accepted, that's great, if not, I think somebody should tell them in a letter or whatever, saying, you know, we're gonna, we gotta do some more research and it's gonna be accepted in the, you know, next May's town meeting, but at that point, it becomes an issue of who takes care of the road then, too. Because I'll tell you this, the last two years, it has been me. I don't get paid for it. I did it as a favor to the town. I've been doing it.
Who takes care of Mr. Meadows?
I think the town does that.
Right, that was my understanding, that if the town, if the road didn't get accepted, my understanding was that the town would end up doing it anyways, as far as snow plowing goes.
All right, so if I don't need a motion, I'm gonna table this. Mr. Adrelis, appreciate your time on this and everything, and all your history on this, and as well as all your snow plowing, appreciate it.
You need anything else, let me know.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, Gemma, I owe you and your team a huge apology. I did not expect that we'd take that along. I'm sorry for going out of order on this. So if I could just get to my agenda real quick. We're going to go back to item number five, discussion of the Complete Streets program with Gemma Wilkins of the CMR PC and her team. Once again, my apologies.
Yeah, no worries. Bill, can you give me the ability to share my screen?
Yes.
So first, I just want to thank everyone. There's been a lot of time spent on this plan, and I know, you know, you're doing double duty as the, you know, working group for the Complete Streets plan, as well as being the planning board. So I really appreciate all that time.
You should be able to do that now, Gemma.
Yes. Okay. Come on. Can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
All right, so this should definitely not be as long as last week was. So I've been basically back and forth talking with Bill, and I actually will be, myself, I'll be leaving CMR PC pretty soon. I took a job working in the city of Gloucester as a town planner, as a staff planner there. So we brought on a bunch of folks today who are going to kind of be keeping tabs on this process going forward and, and helping you guys finish off that plan. So we kind, I, we kind of, with Bill, we kind of shifted around how things would be moving forward, just so that I would have the time to make sure that all of that information is communicated. And then I also, you know, last time we spoke, there was some questions and some, you know, wanting to really look at the actual grant program itself, which, you know, we talked about the first time we met, which is a really long time ago at this point, and now that you're, you know, into the planning process, you kind of know what you're looking for. I just wanted to quickly go over, you know, what are the next steps? What is, you know, involved in actually applying for funds at the tier three phase? And then I mentioned a couple times as we've gone through this, that there's, there's a handful of other grant programs that you might want to look at to either supplement or kind of combine with Complete Streets funding or down the road. As you kind of think about, you know, your, your pedestrian and bike networks in town. So today I have with me Faye, who will be, you know, working on finishing up your plan. She's been, you know, on board this whole time, I have Ian, who has worked with you guys on CDVG, and he'll be communicating when I leave back and forth with you and with Bill. And then I also have our Deputy Director of Transportation at CMRPC, Sujatha, who is here to kind of answer questions about some of those additional grant programs that you could explore more, and also any other questions about sort of that transition. All right, so. Okay, just quickly to overview the kind of outline of this grant program. It started in 2016, you can fund municipal construction on municipally locally owned, municipal locally owned roads. If you have access then, once you get to the tier three phase, to $400,000 in construction funds each year over a five years that the plan covers. So you did tier one, which was the policy, you're currently in tier two, which is creating that plan that we've talked about, the Excel sheet. And then tier three would be that five-year period where you're eligible each year to apply for up to $400,000 in funding. So the next steps from where we're at now is to complete your Complete Streets plan, you know, we talked through the projects themselves and what Faye will be working on when I leave is the cost estimates on those, doing the coding of the elements that are included in those, and the coordinates of the locations of the projects, and then that will, you know, be available for you to review. After that, it's been accepted by you as the planning board. It would go to, you would submit it on the Complete Streets portal, there's usually a little bit of back and forth with Mastiot, they'll provide some feedback. And then you'd be awarded tier three status, and then you would have two opportunities each year to grant application deadlines each year that you could apply for, in total up to $400,000 in funds to actually work and implement these projects. So a little bit about the competitiveness of this grant, so you kind of know what you're going in for. So when you submit the actual plan itself, Mastiot reviews it for whether those projects are an eligible roadways and how complete they are in their description. They don't actually review it for how quality those projects are or how competitive they are. So we've talked a lot about, you know, what makes projects competitive, so, you know, I'm hoping you'll go in with projects that, you know, are pretty strong. You know, again, what that is, is that you make a concerted effort to include all of those different users and include a consideration of them. And I think especially for Dudley, talking in those descriptions about the Safe Roots to School element, which has come up consistently in our conversations, and where applicable, Safe Roots for seniors as well. So this little 81% here, I pulled from the last meeting that we had training that we had with the Complete Streets program administrators. And this is looking at 81% of municipalities that have applied at that time had at least some funds awarded to them. So that's, you know, it's a pretty good number. What that means is, you know, you will pick and choose what projects make sense for you in that year, up to that $400,000 mark. You apply for all of those projects, and then they could fund all of them, or they could fund two of them if you submit for four, or they could fund three of them. But because they're self-contained projects, it's not, you know, it's not going to be like you have the rug pulled under you, you know, you only had half the project funded, and you have to come up with the other amount of money, it might mean you get a little bit less done in a year. But again, you know, there is a good chance, if you submit strong projects, that you're gonna get money out of this process. And then again, you have five years that you can apply each of those years as well, especially as a first-time applicant. I think that that also helps your chances, but just to kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. Okay. When you get to the tier three piece of this, some things to consider, so the funds are applied to by your highway department, similarly to how chapter 90 funds are applied to. But it again is competitive where chapter 90 funds are not. The funds do not include the cost of engineering. So that's usually about 10% of the cost, although that can vary depending on your town's capacity to do some of that engineering, and it sounds like from the conversation, you do have a town engineer. So that could help with that a bit, or that could be a little bit higher if there's a project that is a little bit more complex. And I believe you can use chapter 90 funds towards that if that was what the town decided was a priority for those funds. And then the last point is just to say that, you know, I really appreciate the discussion you've had, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of good, you know, working through what some of the needs are in town, and, you know, there's a lot you've outlined as potential need. So going forward to fill those needs, one thing you can think about is how you pair these Complete Streets funds with, for example, chapter 90 repairs that are already taking place, other planned underground works such as, you know, water pipes being redone, and how that, pairing that with Complete Streets projects can reduce those costs. And then also, you know, I'm going to just put on your radar, the next couple slides are just to kind of briefly review a couple of other grant programs that are out there that you might want to consider into the future, pairing with Complete Streets or something that will, you know, build off of the work you're doing with Complete Streets, particularly on West Main Street. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Faye, just to give a quick overview of those grant programs. And I think, I don't know, why am I, I'm sorry, there you go, okay.
Hi, everybody. So another opportunity is through the Safe Roots to School program, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with it or not. So they basically operate under this kind of five E process, education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation. And under their engineering piece, they offer funding opportunities for infrastructure projects and kind of smaller signs and lines projects. But basically, these programs are used to facilitate bike and pet infrastructure improvements around school zones that promote students' ability to walk, bike, and roll. And so the eligibility for these programs is, you know, contingent on that you have an existing relationship or a new relationship with the Safe Roots to School program. And you're only able to apply for them once you've had at least a six-month relationship. So basically, this infrastructure funding program funds both the design and the construction fully with your project without any, you know, municipal match or anything like that. And there's kind of these three different tiers of project funding for small, medium, and large projects. And kind of the only caveat with, you know, these projects is that you have to be within two miles of a school serving K through eight or some, you know. I guess like if there was a high school that had an eighth grade, you could potentially be eligible for that as well. And it has to be within the public right-of-way, and some projects that you can use for this funding are any type of multimodal enhancements, including sidewalks, on-road or off-road bicycle facilities, bike parking, traffic diversions that'll help, you know, during the school drop-off pickups times, and improvements to crossings and traffic calming measures. So some examples that I included here, this small picture on the left is a raised crosswalk, I'm sure you guys are familiar kind of with that. But basically, it's a vertical treatment that they do at the crosswalk that both acts as a road calming to slow down cars and increases the visibility, I can't talk, the visibility of the driver and the pedestrian as they're crossing. And then this kind of island verge, which we've talked to you guys about, about reducing the crossing distance for pedestrians, and again narrowing the roadway for that calming effect. And the second program is a little bit smaller, it's the Signs and Lines program, and they will provide design services and up to $6,000 in construction funds for low-cost, quick-build projects around a half-mile of a school area. So these are kind of intended to be low-cost, as I said, projects that can be done kind of within the year that the funding becomes available to you. And it is a reimbursement-based funding program, so basically you would upfront the cost for the eligible project, and depending on what you did, if it was eligible for reimbursement, Mastot would do that. So again, it kind of works similarly to the other program, you have to be serving a school K through eight or some sort of variation of that and be within the public right-of-way. But they focus more on smaller items like implementing signage, so there's some examples here, speed limit signs, in-street crossing signs at the crosswalks, student drop-off and pickup signs, slow school zone signs, as well as anything to do kind of with paint to improve crossing or the ability to walk, bike, and roll to school. So the implementation of high-visibility crosswalks, there are a few examples here that have the best contrast between the sidewalk paint and the asphalt, as well as some daylighting options, which they use to reduce parking by using paint to kind of block a certain distance before the crosswalk to increase visibility. And so there's a few plugs that I also added in here, we have a new Safe Roots to School rep for our region, it's been kind of divided between two different people, but the Dudley representative is Lucy Friedman Bell, and her email is provided there. And there's also an upcoming webinar on April 22nd called Where's the Money Funding Your Active Transportation Project? Which is being sponsored by the Safe Roots Partnership. And so basically, they're going to be talking about different funding opportunities through the Safe Roots Partnership that municipalities have availability to, and kind of some of the ideas and projects that have come through those programs and that were successes. You can go to the next slide. And so the second one is the Community Challenge Grants, which are provided through AARP. So these are also quick-action projects to support communities' ability to create livable spaces for people of all ages, particularly with aging populations, they do a lot of work with that. So this is also highly based on public participation, so a lot of what they do is used to increase civic engagement, creating vibrant, integrative public spaces, enhanced mobility and transportation options, and several others like housing and that sort of stuff. But focused more for what you guys are doing, transportation and, you know, access to public spaces is what you guys, you know. So kind of within this realm of funding, they they can implement permanent improvements, they help with demonstration projects, like this picture on the left where they used cone, I mean, the picture on the right, I apologize. And they used cones to kind of create a temporary bike lane on a roadway, or just creating programming and services for your community. Typical grants are usually around 11,000 or less, funding opportunities for larger projects are available, but it would require much more competitive stance on that. So some opportunities that I've presented here are artistic crosswalks, I thought this is kind of a really great way to, you know, show your community the integration of, you know, a safety feature, but also including like the ability to interact with students, especially, you know, you guys were talking a lot about the Mason. I don't want to call it elementary, I forget what you guys were calling it, the Mason Road School. So this kind of hopscotch crosswalk makes it a fun experience for students as they're crossing to school, but it's also high visibility, like what I talked about earlier. There can be some conflicts sometimes when you're using too many colors, it might not be as high visibility as something, you know, white on black. So another one is this installation of bicycle parking, so as you guys are talking about putting, you know, bike lanes along heading toward the high school and junior high between them and the college. You know, having some sort of artistic bike parking kind of does two different tasks, right, it creates an artistic element that can be appreciated by the town while also providing a service to be able to park your bicycle. And then again, with this temporary and permanent fixture here on the right. So this is a competitive grant, so there's a different, there's a couple different aspects that applicants are requested to, you know, be active in, let me pull up my notes really quick. So, so part of what they're looking for is, you know, the impact to the community, particularly with children in the ages of 50-plus, the execution of the project, so getting it done quickly, you know, within the year of the application being funded on time, on budget, and, you know, that, again, that engagement piece of recruiting community volunteers and engagement of residents and local stakeholders, so having them be a part of, you know, the demonstration project that you do, having them be a part of the design process, or at least giving some, allowing for public input. And then finally, just the innovation piece, so being creative with the sidewalks, with the bike parking, your bike lanes, making it unique to your community while also serving its intended purpose. And so I provided a link on the bottom here to the actual grant, unfortunately, you know, the 2020 grant is overdue, but there are some really amazing opportunities I think you guys can use as examples of past projects, as well as some that are being funded for this year that I think will really help with what you guys want to do for Complete Streets.
Okay, so the last program to kind of touch upon and just put on your radar is the tip and tap program. So one of the things that came up quite a lot in this planning process is that West Main Street or 197 is not eligible for Complete Streets funds. So this is a program that, you know, could potentially address some of those problems. But this is a much longer-term program. It is competitive, and there's a real emphasis on healthy transportation, so every project really does have to have components of pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And if I understand correctly, it operates on a five-year cycle, so again, it's a much longer-term kind of investment of thinking about those needs. So this is something that, you know, as you go along, and you're cracking away at these Complete Streets projects and potentially looking at some other, you know, more, more short-term, more, you know, immediate grant programs to think about. We have our, one of our staff, Kevin, would be the person to talk to about that, and he could kind of work with the town on, you know, if it's, what kind of projects would be feasible? And what you might want, if you might want to participate in this and what you might want to do, and Sujatha is on the call as well, and she knows a lot more about this program, so she might be able to add a bit about that.
Thank you, Gemma, yeah. I can't remember the exact project in Dudley that was, that had a tip component to it, but I think it was by Nichols College. The tip program, the Transportation Improvement Program is a regional program, it's target funding through federal highway administration through Mastot. These are large-scale projects, so if you're going to look at reconstruction of West Main Street, this would be a project, this would be the avenue that the town would consider, you would hire a consultant to do the design, they might be right-of-way involved and all that, but it's a multimillion-dollar projects is what you're talking about in the tip program. But I will, again, there will be much more, we'll be reaching out to the communities much more in the next few months, but I wanted to mention, we've seen as part of the regional tip program communities that have small projects, short-term, low-cost projects, don't get funded because it is a large infrastructure part that we're talking here, and we are rolling out a new set of projects or a program called micro projects, so those would be the ones that the community can take advantage of, you know, we've had, like, I'll give an example, Town of Berlin had applied for the Signs and Lines program that Faye was talking about through Safe Roots to School, it's less than $6,000, but it's so competitive, they didn't get monies for that, and when you have tip-target funding of $20 million to the region and you can't fund a project that's $6,000, that's not a good sign, so we want to really help communities and make sure the money stretches out a lot more. So more to come on that, we'll work with you, but if you're interested, I don't know what the So more to come on that. We'll work with you, but if you're interested, I don't know what the needs are on West Main Street, but happy to. You know, if you have the town engineer or somebody that wants to talk to Kevin or myself, happy to sit down. We generally sit down with the community and kind of talk through the entire tip process, you know. Because that, that, that is a long-term, a larger scale part of money that you're looking at as well. So. Happy to chat more with the town regarding that.
And, and that's the end of my presentation. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that before I go, you guys know exactly what's happening next. Exactly what other opportunities are out there. So if anybody has questions or any confusion about any of this. Maybe confusion wasn't the best word.
Well, you guys did such a good job explaining. There's no reason for us to be confused anymore. Anybody on the planning board have any questions?
The only, if you don't mind if I may add, the only word of. Wisdom, I, I, I know that that's kind of a strong word, but the, the, the words of wisdom that I can. Give to a community is. Transportation infrastructure projects, you have to really start working on it. You know, the monies will come. You, you don't wait to for a grant to come along to work on it. So even for like a complete streets. Tier three project, there is design element to it. So. I would say if you think it's a priority, start working on the projects and we can, you know, the staff can work with you to identify funds. So, you know, it will not come true if the community is not behind it and not working on it. So that, that would be my only thing, even like West Main Street. It's a five-year program, but if you think about large infrastructure projects, it will take you five years to go through the environmental permitting and the right of way and all that stuff with Mast dot. So. I would say, you know, start working on your priorities and. Definitely, there are. Communities around the region that started with small grant opportunities, like for example, an AARP eleven thousand dollar grant. But then they've picked the section of the community where they keep applying for different types of grants. They get AARP, then they put Safe Roads to School, then they add on. Something else and something else. And then all of a sudden, all this comes together and, and that part of community like is. You can see large scale like shit. I know we didn't mention the shared streets and. Spaces program that a lot of our communities in the region got funding through Mast dot. And the last time I was talking to Mast dot, Mast dot is rolling out a lot more. Community level grant programs. There is going to be in the bond bill, they've put in monies for. Municipally owned state numbered routes, you know, they, they know that's a big problem with municipalities. They have the. Numbered routes, but they are in charge of those routes. So they're coming up with a new program. So there is going to be a lot of funding coming down, but you have to have projects ready to take advantage of that. So. Now that you have the complete streets tier two almost done, I would say, you know. Continue talking about what are the priorities, which part of town are we going to kind of use these funds? So. That would be my suggestion to the community and, you know, with Ian and Faye, we are happy to sit down with you and. Kind of work with, with you on, on moving forward on those projects or, or areas of interest.
Excellent. Thank you much. So no questions from the board? Then a big thank you from, from all of us and from the town of Dudley in general and. I guess we'll be looking for the next phase.
Great. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Gemma, can you make me the host again, please?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
All right. So before we get into the standard business with the subdivisions, I just want to say a couple of words. My frustration when we were talking about the Tobin Farms was related towards myself. I, I was, I just wasn't realized I was going to use that long. I didn't want to keep Gemma or team waiting. So I was just mad at myself, guys. So. Apology for showing that, that aggravation, that self-aggravation.
I'd also like to apologize because I feel like I kind of sandbagged you and Guy. By not talking to you ahead of time, either one of you and saying that. You know, that I had gone and looked at this whole sidewalk thing and looked at a lot of the things that were said in previous meetings, including selectmen meetings. That you guys attended and I didn't, that was not my intention.
Not taking that way. I meant if, if anything, I think it's good that you did the research. We appreciate it. And if there was, at least I'm not speaking both of us, Guy, but. But if, if, if we did happen to miss something that we need to catch up right now with that approval or with, with, you know, those talking about the waiver, you know, let's do it. But I, I, I mean. I'm human. We can make mistakes. So I'm not worried about that at all.
Gentlemen, if I may, this, this thing is starting to look like an onion. We keep peeling back the layers. It's. The tears, the stress and the, the distractions seem to be just piling up. I, I was really taken aback by. The number of things that apparently were part of discussions, informal discussions, as I understand it. In terms of whatever the open meeting law might have constituted or constituted a meeting and. Somehow actions were going to be taken based on these informal. Meetings, if you will, but very little seems to have been documented. I hope I could be proven wrong in that, but. I, you know, he said that she said and they said, and I'm pretty sure that they agreed to. That, that doesn't get us anywhere. I don't think. I mean, this thing looks like it's got more holes than a sieve.
No, I, and I agree with that to a certain extent. I mean, if there are holes, I think that we need to. Take steps to make sure that things are, are doing, going by the booking and correct here. So I know we started out talking about the guardrails. I kind of like to hit these things one at a time that you say, do we have any issues with the guardrails? And when no. Then go back and we can start talking about, you know, the sidewalks, for example. And I think it was the only two big items. I think everything else is pretty much speaking for itself. And then. If need be, if, if, go on, Guy.
I was just gonna say that. And, and I think everybody kind of knows this, but I mean, the subdivision's been around for twenty years. There's no money left to finish anything that's not finished. If the town's willing to accept it. If there's something that comes up in the future regarding a sidewalk or a guardrail, the town's going to be responsible for it. I mean, I, I just think we owe it. I just think we owe it to the homeowners to put it before the town. If the town, if, you know, our recommendations should be, okay, this is where it is. It's not a hundred percent. It's not, it's not perfect, but if the town's willing, if the people at town meeting are willing to vote it in and say, yes, we're going to accept it as a roadway. Then that, that's their, that's their pleasure.
I just don't want the selectman coming back later at a later date if something goes south. And trying to pin it on this board and say, well, you know, they made the, we were acting on the planning board's recommendation. We didn't know that they were opening us up to. A lawsuit because, I mean, I'm trying to think of what could happen with guardrails. A, a car skids off the road and, and the winter time. And because the guardrail isn't there, plunges nine feet down into that ravine and somebody gets, you know, injured or killed. And I know. If, if I were a personal injury attorney, I know who I'd come after along with everybody else. Sue the town because guardrails were supposed to be there and they're not there. Mr. Andrew Leverage said that there was an informal meeting of the, the neighbors there in that, in that part of the neighborhood saying. They don't want the sidewalks, that they're fine. No sidewalks is fine, but. Getting back to, you know, Guy's point from years ago about that lawsuit. I believe in that particular situation, it wasn't even somebody who. Was in that subdivision originally. It was somebody who bought the house after. It was an, an owner that came along later and actually was able. To get the town to have to put the sidewalks in and the town was on the hook for that. So, you know, if, if, if either of you guys want to go back to the Board of Selectmen and. I'd be willing to go with you. I just don't want to go alone. And, and, and stand before them and say, we need your guidance here or we need your blessing. And, and do you want us to grant these waivers that have been talked about that apparently never, never happened? You know?
I'd be willing to go.
They, they give us the old, yeah, we got to get this done. We're just going to have to take it. The town's going to have to. Be on the hook for this and that's the end of it. Well, then, fine. But we also don't want to set a precedent here where. You know, all of a sudden we've got all of these developers that decide, well, gee, you know. Although now, of course, the, the structuring, how much money they have to secure upfront is, is that, that's been resolved. I, my understanding from what. I saw was that a big part of the problem was we never ever, the town, when I say we, the town never. Required that developer to have enough skin in the game in case something like this happens. And that that's why. All the money's gone and, and we can't, can't get anymore.
It was, it was built on a letter of credit.
I, I would be willing to accompany you with that effort, depending on the date might be. An issue. I don't know when we could get on the agenda for the selectmen, if that is something that the board feels we need to do.
So there's two things just came up, Bill. The first one would be to have a joint. Planning board slash a board of selectmen meeting where we could discuss this with them. And then the second one would be. Is it possible instead of the planning board? Sponsoring the article, is that the proper way that the, the board of selectmen can do it?
The board of selectmen, the board of selectmen are actually the highway commission is for the town. They are the ones that have to approve the road.
That's, that's correct. But as a subdivision, you have to approve the completion of the road and for street acceptance. You have to make a report.
Right.
If you don't actually, you know, have a role in approving the acceptance.
Okay. Yeah. So I mean, we can, we could, I mean, if the board feels that way, we could definitely make that report. And in that report, we can. State our reservation, but just the fact that, hey, the guardrails aren't exactly as they were supposed to be. The sidewalks aren't exactly as it's supposed to be. And then just go from there. I'm oversimplifying things, obviously, but to, to Guy's point, well. This, the subdivision's been there for a long time and I think the town does owe it to the. The people document, the people residents who live there to do everything we can to get that accepted. So is the board's pleasure to try to get together with the board of selectmen? I'm seeing head nutting. So. Bill, do we need to vote to that? Or can we just ask, can I just ask you to get us a, a meeting with the board of selectmen?
Sure. I think Michelle and I can coordinate that.
Excellent.
Michelle, can you talk to John about putting us on an upcoming agenda?
All right. Anything else on the subdivisions? If that's, if that's all at Tobin Farms, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
Could I just ask, Bill, when is the, the subdivision? With, with the, that we accepted the definitive plan last meeting, when is that? Public hearing coming up? Is it next meeting or?
April fourteenth.
Okay.
Yep. So Dan, I did put down, you know, discussion of Butler Way in case you wanted to have any discussion on that before the hearing opens up.
No, definitely want to, we, I think we want to discuss that. Who wants to start? There was a couple of comments people had.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did try to share something, a very amateurish PowerPoint, to be sure, in terms of my own thoughts in regards to this. I, you know, all of us come from different backgrounds. Mine is more in the, the private sector, if you will. And I, I look at this thing called waivers and I, I would have been hard put in my previous employment. To go to my GE site leader and tell him that I'd sat down with a vendor or a customer and I gave these concessions and waivers I'm equating as. Synonymous with concessions. The first question that would come back to me was, well, what'd you get? And when I said nothing, I suspected my employment would be very short-term after that. You know, you, we give these things away. It's like a game show. We take things out of the. The prize closet and we give them to every contestant, get something. It's like an award. You know, if you showed up, you're going to get something. Well, maybe some of those things really shouldn't be given. And I'm referring now to section. Six, if you will, of our own rules and regulations. Waiver of compliance, strict compliance with the requirements of these rules and regulations may be waived only when, in the judgment of the board, such an action is in the public interest. Not in the interest of the bottom line of the developer, but the public's interest, if you will. And not inconsistent with, and I have to turn the page, subdivision control law. So we have rules and regulations, but we seem to open them up to negotiation. Again, I, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we want to. Give these guys a chance to make a buck, but our responsibility is not to their bottom line. Our responsibility is to the town of Dudley, to the citizens of Dudley. Who, and we want to keep in mind, I would think, what they do and what they don't do. And I think that what they don't do part of it is the thing that we trip over as we go into these things, the years down the road. So waivers, concessions, this, a lot of weeds that we're planting. And we have to wade through them at a later date. And I don't know that we always come up with the best result. My, my two cents. And again, if you wanted to take a look at those cartoonish little figures I threw into that PowerPoint, you're more than welcome to do so.
I did see it, Richard. I liked it.
Thank you. Been a long time since I've done anything like that.
So Bill, could you have the list of waivers that Butler Way was asking for?
Yes, I can pull that up.
While he's doing that. So my mindset is, you know, you, you come with a preliminary plan. And you, you basically, you're trying to feel out the planning board to see what waivers you might be able to get from your plan. And now we look at the definitive plan that they're submitting and it's changed because they, they're doing the duplexes. And Richard was saying, you know, he feels like it's a real bait and switch kind of deal here that we're kind of getting a raw deal that they're changing the things in the eleventh hour. So. If the board agrees with Richard, if we all agree that, that, that seems kind of like a raw deal. Doesn't it pretty much mean that we're no longer bound by anything we promised regarding waivers because they kind of changed things in the eleventh hour?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of our own rules and regulations, we are not bound by anything in that preliminary plan. And I would submit, you know, a little bit of logic that Mr. Lavoy shared with us in terms of the sidewalks. He said, well, we don't need any sidewalks because there aren't any sidewalks around JBF. Well, that's true, but there aren't any duplexes there either. So I mean, if, if you want to employ that kind of logic, then let's have it both ways, not just one side of the street.
We're, we're spending a lot of time and money and effort too with. This, these complete streets to, to figure out how to put sidewalks in all these other streets that don't have them.
Right.
So let's put them in now and don't have to worry about it for the future because maybe someday we will have sidewalks on JB. Is it JB Lane or JB Ave?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The minimum width, if you will. They're asking for forty feet wide instead of the fifty feet wide. The rules and regulations are specific. Fifty feet is the minimum. Okay?
Okay, let me.
I mentioned earlier the slippery slope issue.
Let me play devil's advocate there on those two points.
Okay, let me, let me finish before the devil takes the pulpit, okay?
Okay.
The point is, minimum is fifty. If we grant forty, somebody comes in, as you suggested, with the farm of twenty-two acres or twenty-three and a half acres or whatever, they come in and they say, well, wait a minute, you gave them forty, how about thirty-nine for me? And then the next guy down the line says, well, thirty-eight and a half. If you gave them thirty-nine, I should be able to get that. That slope is slow, slippery, Mr. Witroba, that there's no bottom to it.
Agree. So with regard to the sidewalks, waiving the sidewalk requirement on one side of the road. It's a cul-de-sac and I'm going by memory here, but I thought that in that plan, in the definitive. It still showed the sidewalk going down one side of the street, going down around the cul-de-sac. And then coming up the other side. Oh, like two house lots and that it just doesn't continue all the way out to the road. And that that was because of. That was because of the, the width, the, the lack of width that they have there at the road. Does that sound right? Is that my? Is my recollection correct? Just, okay. So. As opposed to somebody having a large subdivision and just coming and saying that for whatever reason. Hey, isn't sidewalks on one side of the road good enough? Let's only require, you know, can you waive the requirement for sidewalks on both sides of all the roads? And for whatever reason, it getting waived. That, it's a little bit different, I think. Second point, that width. Granting a waiver for the width. I understand the argument about acting in the public's best interest. However. Doesn't a person who owns a piece of property, let's say you owned a piece of property that. You had three hundred feet of frontage. And you decided to take out a couple of lots, do A and R lots. But you figured that down the road, you wanted to put a road in. So you could put a subdivision in a cul-de-sac. And so you based your. And so you based your calculations on, you go to the town and the town says, well, we need fifty feet there. And you do your A and R and you leave fifty feet to get into that back lot so that you could do a subdivision down the road. And then the town, for whatever reason, changes the subdivision regs and says, well, we need sixty feet now. We want sixty feet, so we have plenty of room for a nice wide road and extra wide sidewalks. And for whatever reason. Well, that that person who was planning on being able to do something now, the only way they can do it is if they are able to get a waiver to go from sixty down to fifty. And this actually happened. The old, if you go back far enough in Dudley's history, it used to be forty feet. And I know that there are places in town where there's accesses to the lots that are forty feet wide because the person who did all those A and R lots on the street left forty feet because he thought that's what he was going to need. And then all of a sudden, you know, the people said, well, we need sidewalks, we need more room, we need to be wider. We got from now on, let's make the regs fifty feet.
Okay, to begin with, I understand the world changes, things evolve. And what was forty feet is now fifty feet, maybe sixty feet, maybe seventy feet. And I think if you look at Sunbound, it is actually seventy feet. I believe Milbury, I think is seventy feet. Isn't it, Bill? Something like that? That things are going to change. There's no doubt about that. And if people have something in mind and they don't act upon it for twenty, thirty, forty years, I don't see where the town is necessarily obligated to make their dream of thirty years ago come true thirty years later. We haven't heard anything from the the owner of this property. All we've heard from is the developer. Whether anybody had a dream or not is still out there to be seen. And what the developer is looking to do, gentlemen, is, in my opinion, he's trying to take a small, relatively small parcel and get as much out of that and as much into that as he can. So he can get as many dollars into his pocket and then go back to Upton and put it in the bank there, whether he ever shows up again in Dudley or not. God only knows. And whatever he thinks of our forty foot becoming fifty feet or sixty feet or seventy feet, it probably won't matter to him worth a damn, to be quite honest.
All I would say is what you can do in that situation, I believe the the subdivision that's up past Eisenhower Drive off of Lyons Road had the same situation. There was a forty foot right away left on the on Lyons Road. So what we did in that situation is we we allowed it to be forty feet for the first, to go in between the two lots that were in existence. And then as soon as it got to the to the larger parcel of property, open it up to fifty feet.
It sounds like, that's, it sounds like a reasonable thought, Mr. Gordon. And I would hope that you bring that forth next time we discuss this issue.
Yeah, and I mean, as far as wave and open space, I mean, I I would agree with Mr. Clark if that, you know, in the in the summary in the preliminary discussion, if there was never mentioned made of duplexes, it was all, you know, assumed at single family homes. And you were approving a six lot subdivision, you would assume six, six dwellings or 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 six properties to sell. But now if he's coming back with, you know, making three, three duplexes on three of those lots, that's a fifty percent increase in saleable units. And why would you want to waive, you know, open space? The open space could consume one or two lots. So I mean, I think he has to, you know, if, I I would say he has to be fair with the town. And, you know, I understand that that's his right to build a duplex in that area if he if he chooses to do so. But if that wasn't specified in the preliminary plan, and now it is specified in a definitive plan, you know, I think I think we have every right to take a look at it, a hard look at it.
Yeah, under the current regulations in town. That's an unbuildable plot, correct? It doesn't have enough frontage. Or is it because it's a pre-existing?
Well, you're making, you're making a new street with the frontage, right?
Yeah. How many acres are there?
It's about three and a half or so.
Yeah, so that's.
For an interior lot, I think you need five acres.
So the only option for that property is is a subdivision.
Wait, I missed that. We said subdivision. So what was a five acre limit for?
Well, five acres is an interior lot.
There's not enough furniture, not enough furniture for a regular lot, but if you have fifty feet of furniture and five acres, you can do an interior lot.
Gotcha. Yeah, because it's reds fifteen over there, so it's less than five acres, so you need a hundred feet of frontage to even just put one house on that. Unless you do a subdivision.
Correct.
So the other thing to consider here is if the developer, if the developer was willing to, if the developer was willing to change the definitive plan back to what it originally showed for numbers of houses. I think the board probably should continue with our blessing on this. Because we basically did that in the beginning and the, you know, there's been a lot of money spent on engineering since then. I I don't know this guy, this isn't, I don't want to, I don't want to create a situation where you think this, this guy's my uncle or something.
No, 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 not just not, well, maybe a cousin. I'm not sure about that. Your family tree aside, Bill, as I understand it, and I think you made the point in surpriseless somewhat, so I was taken somewhat aback, that preliminary plan really doesn't stand muster, does it?
No, it doesn't. It's really, it's advisory only, but obviously.
So what we have here is a collection of things that can be there or not be there, and the world really will keep revolving. Okay, again, I really think, you know, we tread dangerously when we start to go away from the rules and regulations. These people come to us, our rules and regulations are published, they are available, they are online, they know what they are. I look back at the the nine twenty-three presentation and the presentation previously from Mr. LaVoy very, very carefully. He never mentions houses or homes or residences dwellings. He only talks about lots. I don't think that that was just happenstance. I think there was some thought there that maybe there's something down the road that we weren't really going to be privy to until we got further down that road, if you will.
I do not remember what the vote was exactly. But, Richard, do you recall whether or not you voted to approve these waivers initially?
I believe I did. And if you go back to the rules and regulations, Mr. Wetroba, please do.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So let me continue with point. So if 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 this developer had brought us a definitive subdivision plan that correctly reflected what he had in the preliminary plan as far as the number of structures and the number of of family dwellings in the structures, then we're still going, we're still going forward with this. We're still giving it its blessing, correct?
Mr. Wetroba, if I may, I'm looking again at the rules and regulations. These are the town of Dudley, if you will, section one, authority, okay? Likewise, the board can modify or amend the plan of a subdivision or require a change in a plan of as a condition of its retaining the status of an approved.
You just muted yourself.
You muted.
Let me, let me get back to that again. I'm reading from our rules and regulations, if you will. And I, I am on section one authority, okay? It reads, board can modify or amend the plan of subdivision or to require a change in a plan as a condition of its retaining a status of an approved plan. That's in our rules and regulations. Gentlemen, all I'm saying is let's abide by our rules and regulations. And yes, I am reflecting, I'm looking back, and I have some buyer's remorse in terms of what I've seen that we've agreed to here. I'm not going to deny that. And I will freely admit, I was probably in error when I agreed to these. And I admit that maybe I thought I had a little victory and that we got some kind of a sidewalk in there. Well, shame on me, because that really didn't give us very much. All I'm saying is, gentlemen, we have these rules and regulations. Let's abide by the rules and regulations. Let's let those who are coming to us asking for something abide by those rules and regulations unless there's ambiguity, there's something that's not clear, and rightfully, you know, we need to address that. There's some conflict with another board or commission or body in public, public body in town. Or there's a pot of gold that they're going to drop on our, you know, laps. And I've seen the selectmen, eyes get real big when they talk about the DMA project down on Chase Ave. You know, so that pot of gold may be out there somewhere, but if it doesn't pass that sniff test, as far as I'm concerned, the rules and regulations stand. If somebody put those together, I didn't create those overnight. Those have stood the test of time. I've looked at other towns in the area and ours are not way out of line. I mean, we're not talking about trying to build some castle in the sky here. We're talking about things that are pretty much boilerplate.
I I think Richard makes some great points here. We do have these for a reason and we're not here to help others. We're here to make sure the whole town of Dudley benefits. But to Steve's point, we kind of gave this guy a green light already. He's moving forward. If we stay, if we stick to everything that is there as far as what he's asking for waiver, if we deny all of those, he can't build. He can't. So are we, does the board want to tell him, no, you can't build here? We're not waiving this? Or are we willing to compromise with him?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, getting back to the rules and regulations, that preliminary plan does not stand muster. That could be modified. We have it, we have open public meetings ahead of us. Who knows what will come out of that? Bill, am I wrong in stating that?
Why would any developer want to ever come before the planning board with a preliminary plan and ask for guidance if the planning board's intention is to just basically pull the rug out from them in the eleventh hour and say, whoop, sorry, you know that stuff we said you could do before? You ain't doing it. Hit the bricks, pal.
And Richard, if I may just look quick, Richard. Okay, it's our rug and they actually don't have to come before us with a preliminary plan. Do they, Bill?
Not for a residential subdivision, no.
Yep. No, to to Richard's point, I mean, what I heard earlier is that they basically changed what they showed us. And that gives us, in my opinion, I think I heard a couple of the board members say in their opinion as well, to ask them to come back to the table.
Right. And Dan, all I'm saying is, if we get them to roll back to the original plan, don't you think maybe we should think about letting them go forward with the original plan?
Well, that'll be a discussion at that time, I think. I, you know, we can each vote how we want to, but I think definitely right now, we do have a strong reason to say, hey, gentlemen, we want, we want to you back at the table, we want to talk.
Oh, I agree. Oh, I I I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying.
Then once, but but once we have that conversation, then once we have them back at the table, we can start bringing up some of Richard's points.
But but the clock is ticking. We've got to get this.
Yes, we we do have a scheduled meeting on the fourteenth, and we do have a public meeting opening on the fourteenth. So there is a mechanism going forward to address these issues. So I would say, I think we both, all of us have talked this to death at this point, and I think we need to go on to April fourteenth and see what that.
Richard, you said that. You talked, we talked this, you're saying we talked this to death.
Well, admittedly, Mr. Wetroba, I have never been accused of brevity, so I'm not going to start trying to switch the horses in midstream here. But I, again, I confess, I have a great deal of buyer's remorse here. I think there was, if not bait and switch, there was a little attempt to lead us in a direction which we were very willing to go in.
Not transparent.
Agreed.
Yep.
All right, so we will definitely have conversation with them slash about the project on the fourteenth then, correct, Bill?
Yes.
Excellent. Be also nice to hear if we get Butters and other folks in there who want to share their opinions with us. Be nice to hear what they have to say.
Agreed. Hopefully, we'll get some, some turnout.
All right, so the discussion about this way, we took care of that. Inspections and actions associated with site plans?
No, we don't have any active site plans.
Planner's plate?
Just a couple of minor points. I did have a conversation with CMRPC about the use of the LPA time for the stormwater bylaws. They are starting to work on that. Their timeframe would probably be to get a draft to us by the end of June, and then we could bring it to town meeting in the fall. So I think that will be fine as far as the EPA is concerned, as long as we're working on it, we should be okay. The local rapid recovery plan that CMRPC is preparing for us is about to kick off next week. It's going to be a very important project for how to help businesses recover from the pandemic. That's going to take about a six month timeframe, so it's a pretty quick process. And there'll be a lot of opportunity for the public to get involved in that, especially businesses. I think Steve mentioned earlier that the town does have a new website now, a new look to the website. So that's, I think, a good step forward. I'm going to be talking to the web developer about creating a mechanism to show various plans that are before the planning board, put those up on the website so people can look at them.
Bill, could you, could you ask him whether or not the intention's going to be to bring back any of that older information that was available prior to the change? Is it, in other words, is it just that they haven't gotten around to doing that yet? Or is that stuff pretty much gone? And if we need to access it, we have to come down and look at some archives or something?
No, I think we'll be able to put up whatever we want to, Steve. So if there's things on there that you want, we can, we can put it back up.
No, 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 I'm talking about historical information. For instance, it used to be you could go on, you could go on the town's website and I could see planning board minutes going back for years. And now after, since the, since the change, there's not, not, not nearly as many. You can't go back very far and they're not there.
Well, actually, we're having a meeting tomorrow on the website, Steve, so that'll be an opportunity for me to learn more about it. So I'll ask that question and and give you an answer once I know more.
Okay, thanks.
Um, as I mentioned to the board, we are now able to meet live again. We can continue Zoom, but I'm assuming you want to meet live. So the next meeting on the fourteenth would be in the town hall, if that's your your preference.
Yeah, the next Zoom meeting, I'm not going to be here. I don't know when it's going to be. I will not be present.
That's fine. So we'll be back meeting live then at the next meeting for anybody who's who's stayed with us this long. The town hall will be reopening again for limited hours for the public to come in and and meet with their departments. So the hours will be Monday afternoon and Tuesday and Wednesday morning. So if anybody wants to meet with me, we can arrange time to for them to come into the town hall and and meet with me and look over whatever I have in the office. So that's it for for the planner's plate.
Anybody in the planning board have any comments?
Again, not to be accused of brevity. Bill, I sent you, forwarded an email to you regarding MDP action grants. This came to me from the CMRPC. The only thing I could associate with MDP was Tom Brady was coming to town, but I don't know who's going to pay for that. I I'm not clear, the acronym wasn't defined, so I'm not sure what that means, but it does sound like there's some money out there somewhere at the end of the rainbow. The other thing I would like to ask is, I know past practice has been that we were available to us a folder prior to the meeting. I kind of like the present situation where things are available online several days before the meeting and we can at our own discretion hurt them off, research them, do as we will with them, a paper airplane, if that were the case. If if you were inclined to or able to, could you could keep that practice going? I would much appreciate it. Feels like trying to drink it from a fire hose to open that folder the night of a meeting, maybe ten minutes before, trying to get a handle on all of what might be there.
Sure, I think we can do that. And as we work with the web developer, we can try to create a space for the planning board to access documents as well.
Thank you.
Any other playing board comments?
Will the A and R that we approved earlier tonight be in the lobby to get signed?
Yes, thank you. Michelle, they're on my desk in the planning office. If you would get that, bring them down to the police lobby. So there'll be my law and the paper copies to sign.
All right, thank you.
Good catch there. Yeah, we don't have any audience anymore. It's nothing there. Next meeting is going to be at April fourteenth, seven o'clock. We do have a public hearing there. Any consultants vouchers or bills to be paid?
No.
Good there. Town notices, anything else to talk about?
No, not that I have. Michelle, do you have anything? No, okay.
Then adjournment is the next on the item on the list.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Steve, what do you think?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And I'm with you guys with an I. All right, unanimous. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody, and looking forward to seeing you guys and gal two, or two weeks roughly, in person.
Great.
Not everybody.
Thank you.